Okay, the November 18th, 2014 meeting of the Riverbank Planning Commission is now open. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Dagley, Vice Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney.
Here.
Chair Stewart.
Here.
And Commissioner Vaucluse.
Here.
Thank you. Move to conflict of interest. Any planning commission or staff member who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are asked to declare their conflict. Moving on to public comments, and no action can be taken at this time. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person. Each person may speak once during this time, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. We ask that you state your name and city of residence. Moving on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commission member. Otherwise, the recommendation of the staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. And on tonight's consent calendar, we have posting of the agenda for tonight's meeting, approval of the agenda, and approval of the minutes of the October 21st, 2014 meeting. Ask for motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 2.0A, item 2.0B, item 2.0C.
Second that.
Vice Chair Hughes. Commissioner McKinney.
Yes.
Chair Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vaucluse.
Yes.
Open the public hearing, and we're moving to item 3.1, which was a continued item from the October 21st, 2014 Planning Commission meeting regarding the rules and procedures for the City of Riverbanks Planning Commission.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, this is an item that we've had on our agenda for quite some time, actually dating back to July 15th, then again on August 18th, then again on September 16th, then again on October 21st. What we have presented to you for tonight is the redline version of the changes that we had discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting, and I can't remember for the life of me exactly when that was, it's probably July 15th, where we had a number of changes that were requested of more than one of the commissioners. So what we've done is we've highlighted those, starting on page 6, and on to page 7, to describe those changes to these procedures and guidelines. And then we would ask that your commission take a look at these, obviously feel comfortable with them, make changes where appropriate, and then ultimately take action so that we have an enforceable set of rules and regulations for this body. So we have in here, starting on page 11, a proposed draft Planning Commission resolution, and that resolution would reflect an action of this commission on this date to, again, approve as presented and/or as modified the City of Riverbank Planning Commission rules and procedures.
Do you have any commissioner comments or questions?
I'm pretty thorough on this, the changes we made.
If you want, I can go back over those changes again, just a little bit more detail.
Yeah.
We got time. The first change that we were talking about had to do with the chairperson, and we had inserted some additional language that suggested that the chair can preserve strict order and decorum at the Planning Commission meeting, and the chair may announce special rules for a particular agenda item, including but not limited to the length of time a person may speak, asking a spokesperson to address the commission on behalf of a group of individuals with the same views in the event the hearing provided time for arguments or rebuttals for proponents and opponents. So it basically allows the chairperson the ability to control the meeting and the direction of the meeting in that regard. The second is having to do with regular meetings and the fact that whenever the day fixed for any regular meeting, the commission falls upon a day designated as a holiday, such meeting may be held as the same hours the next succeeding business day, which is not a holiday. So it's just more of a procedural issue. And obviously, if we have agenda items, that helps us because we've got all the advanced public notice requirements we've got to take care of. Special meetings, additional language was added that the chairperson or majority of the commission and/or the community development director may call a special meeting at any time by posting a 24 hours advance notice. And then also going on to say that such notice should be delivered to each commissioner at least 24 hours before the special meeting, provided however that a commissioner may waive a failure to receive notice to a special meeting by filing a written waiver for the commission before the meeting or by appearing at the special meeting. Additionally, such notice should be delivered 24 hours in advance to each radio station and/or local newspaper of general circulation which have requested such notice. Where else? Delivery of agendas. Additionally, individuals wishing to receive copies of agenda by mail may do so by paying the city an annual fee to offset the cost of mailing. And some additional language in public comments. And then one of the other issues is length of meeting, right, under section 12.7. And then what we said is after three hours, so meeting starts at 6:00, we're saying basically by, what, by 9:00, huh?
I thought at that point, if we deemed that it was going to go further, we could...
Right, and I think there's wording in there that allows for that.
Right, and then any unfinished business connected to the regular meeting unless, based on special circumstances, the commission votes to extend the timeframe for the meeting. So there's your operative language that allowed you to extend it beyond the three-hour timeframe to allow for additional testimony and deliberation. So that was pretty much it. So with that, I mean, these changes to these procedures pretty much brings us up to date and provides sound operating guidelines for this commission, and it'll become part of the commission package.
One little thing.
Okay.
I've been doing this for a while now.
Okay.
I think that if we're going to limit the time that a member of the public may speak, I think that we should have a similar limit for a commissioner. Because I have been sitting here where commissioners have gone on and on and on, and then somebody else will speak, and then that commissioner will come back and go on and on and on. And I don't see anywhere where we have protections against that.
Well, I mean, that's kind of unusual. I mean, you're all serving as a servant, appointed by a council member to this special body. You know, I've been doing this almost 30 years, and I don't think I've ever been in a situation where I've had either a council, a board of supervisors, a board of trustees, or a special commission specifically have a limit, the amount of time that they can take to deliberate on a matter that they're intending to take an action on.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I think that the members of the public probably feel that same way. And over the years, this has been, in comparison to the city council, a much more relaxed, much more informal body. And if we're going to become a bit more formal and a bit more strict, I'm just concerned about that because I know that members of the public feel very free to come and share their feelings about many different subjects with this planning commission. So I don't want to inhibit the public's right to speak and still allow commissioners to go on and on and on.
Well, you're really talking about kind of like an anti-filibustering type rule. And I don't, again, I don't know where that's ever been addressed specifically for a commission or especially appointed body. The way that this is structured, you know, just like we've done in the past, I mean, the chairman has the ability to reopen the public hearing, and we have done that on a number of occasions, if additional testimony needs to be given in order to clarify an issue that you're deliberating on.
That's my concern. I just want to make sure that the public always feels that they can come and address their problems with this. Yes.
I don't think that trust is being distracted by what we're suggesting here. I think that always falls under the control of the chairperson.
And just to add on that, the rules that we have presented here, they say that the public testimony can be limited by the chair, but no less than one minute. So there is no specific limitation in the rules. It's just gives a minimum time that the chair has discretion to limit comment to.
And we would then probably have to change the comments.
Agenda. If you adopted these, then it's really at the discretion of the chair to set the time limit, and if for a certain meeting you wanted to set the time limit to five minutes, you could, but yeah, under ordinary circumstances...
Well, this is separate. Now, the agenda, in talking about the five minutes, has to do specifically with items not published on the agenda. There, I don't believe there's anywhere in our published agenda where we have suggested a restriction in the amount of time that the public has to comment on a specific public hearing item that's presented to you for action.
Only on the...
There is a difference.
On the comments.
Correct.
So that's going to be our clear understanding that during a public hearing, there will be no time limit on a member of the public.
It's up to the chairperson.
It is. Okay, all right, okay.
That's up to the chairperson, which is similar to what the mayor has done, depending on what item is being presented to them, you know, taking a look at the number of individuals who are wishing to speak on a particular item, trying to control his or her agenda, and determines that a five-minute limit is appropriate and fairly applies that to everyone in the audience that wishes to speak on that item.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
Meeting by meeting.
And it's basically voice, but not...
Whatever ground rules you've set at the beginning of the public hearing have to apply to everyone. Otherwise, then you got a discrimination issue you got to deal with.
I'm comfortable with that, then. Thank you.
Very good question.
I mean, given that, I know in the past, we were wanting all of us to be here to vote on this, given with the absence of John today, do we feel comfortable moving forward with this, given we've kind of carried it for months now?
I think this is just a continuation of the last one, the same information.
We were waiting for more of us to be present. Now, I think with...
So he's heard it, now I'm hearing the last bit of the changes, so I'm good with these changes.
Commissioners, just procedurally, before you vote on this, it should be opened up for a public hearing, just because it is agendized as a public hearing.
Do we have any comments or questions on this item? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Well, are we comfortable?
Just let the record show that no one was in the audience to talk about this particular item. So the resolution that we presented is illustrated on page 11.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to this, that we adopt, in this case, resolution number 2014-010 to the Planning Commission accepting the rules and procedures laid before us.
Do we have a second?
A second, yes.
Third, I... Yes.
Vice Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney.
Yes.
Chair Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vaucluse.
Yes.
Thank you.
July.
Johnson shock. Okay. Shall we move to item 3.2, a zoning ordinance amendment establishing the reasonable accommodation ordinance? Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, this is an item. This is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment. This is to add language to our ordinance code relative to reasonable accommodation. Let me preface this by saying that we're getting ready to start our fifth cycle of the housing element update that is due to the state by December of 2015. We're hopeful we'll have a draft housing element in administrative form available first part of 2015, January or so, 2015. And there are a number of programs and policies that were part of the fourth cycle that need to get implemented in order for us to be able to demonstrate to the state that we have done what we said we were going to do as part of the fourth cycle. So what you're going to, tonight is the first opportunity we've had, that we're going to have, to present two specific areas of focus to the commission. Ultimately, these items will be presented to the city council for action. They will result in ordinance changes to the municipal code to address these issues specifically. When we go through the fifth cycle with the housing element, it's extremely important that these programs be in place before we go through that audit with the state as part of the fifth cycle. So that's why it's very important for us to go through this effort tonight. We've got two items tonight. This is one of two. And David Niskin and my staff is here and ready to make the presentation on this first item, which is a reasonable accommodation.
Thank you, John. And like he was saying, this zoning ordinance amendment will help us be in better light when we start going through the process to update the housing element for the fifth cycle. The reasonable accommodation ordinance is, it establishes criteria and procedures for the request for reasonable accommodation, and that means that someone with a disability protected under federal or state law, or and/or state law, can make a reasonable accommodation to accommodate their disability. That could be a variance in the setback requirements, it could be a fee waiver, also some other options in that light as well. And it provides the opportunity for the city to provide reasonable accommodation to an individual with a disability. Just to give you a little background, federal and state housing laws prohibit discrimination in housing against individuals in the... Lost my train of thought here, one second. So, yeah, federal and state housing prohibit discrimination and the opportunity for housing for individuals with disabilities. The law recognizes that individuals with disabilities may need a little bit extra tools to achieve equality in housing, and like I was saying before, that could be accommodations such as the setback requirements and such. And this ordinance provides the city with the opportunity to eliminate those barriers in four housing opportunities. Like John was saying, the 2009-2014 housing element was adopted in 2009, and part of that, it contains goals, policies, and programs, which essentially are actions that the city needs to implement to implement the housing programs in that housing element. Now, program 5.3A clearly states that the city needs to adopt a reasonable accommodation ordinance, and it lists criteria. For instance, the request for reasonable accommodation will be used by an individual with a disability. The request for, the requested accommodation is necessary to make housing available to an individual with a disability, and the request will not impose an undue financial or administrative burden to the city. And then the timeframe for that to be adopted is December 2012. Now, obviously, we're past that, but we're trying to pay catch-up during the time that we're updating the housing element.
So for the record, that's 2015, correct? You said 2012.
Well, no. But, again, for the record, you know, the requirements, many of these policies and programs were requirements that were imposed on local government by state law. And they were incorporated, folded into the fourth cycle housing element. And the suggested timeframe was part of that fourth cycle. So theoretically, starting, the clock started August of 2009 to get this work done. And unfortunately, the work hasn't been done, and we'll be judged by the state as part of this fifth cycle review. So it's extremely important for us to get these things finished, checked off, so to speak, so we can advance to the next level.
Was there misspeaking of the year that you mentioned?
No.
No.
Absolutely. That was an anticipated timeframe of December of 2012.
12, okay. I just want to make sure I got my dates right there.
It is, it's correct. It's something that should have been part of the work program that was accomplished previously. And it wasn't. So we're picking up the pieces.
Right.
I have a question. I just want to make sure, okay, now, does the city count through any stumbling blocks for revisions of a building or whatever that's necessary for a person? But then, did I understand that the city will not be required to undertake any of the expense of making that type of thing available?
Well, in the ordinance, the community development director must make certain findings to approve the reasonable accommodation. Under those findings, and you'll find it in the ordinance under pages 4 and 5, if you can flip to that, and I can show you, it's 153.226, under the proposed section.
The intent is that there's not a physical impact on the city, and there won't be. The real issue here is that if you've got an individual with a disability that needs certain variances or deviation from the code, and I could think of one that's happened here in town, where we've had an individual that's handicapped, has a handicap van, handicap van that he purchased doesn't necessarily fit in the garage, he's got to expand his garage, needs deviation from setbacks to be able to do that. You know, if he has a bona fide handicap, this provision would allow him to construct that garage addition and not necessarily meet the standards for setbacks.
I was pretty sure that's what you meant. But the city would not be required to fund that?
No, not at all. Yeah, absolutely not. Yeah. And I have a couple of examples, including the one that John stated in the PowerPoint, just to give you an idea of a couple of other options and a couple of other accommodations that could be requested and approved. And like I was saying, under the criteria, you know, first you have to establish that the disability is protected and defined by state and federal laws, state fair housing law, and also that the requested accommodation is necessary to make housing available to the individual. And thinking of a good example would be if a wheelchair ramp is technically in the required setback for the city in that particular zone, and the accommodation would be, well, let's push the setback a little bit further to accommodate the wheelchair ramp, or it's within that area. So, you know, someone comes in and provides that as a written, it's written down that that's what they're needing, that's what the accommodation is going to provide. The community development director takes that and makes sure there are required findings that are per code, and then provides a written approval or denial within the 30 days. So...
Let's go to the next slide, Dave.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, and the proposed ordinance, like I was saying, establishes procedures and criteria for the request for reasonable accommodation. And it's also, in very important part, it's a ministerial process. It's approved or denied by the community development director. And it reduces the time it would take for a reasonable accommodation request to be processed. And that's, again, to reduce and eliminate barriers for persons with disabilities to make housing available and equal for everyone.
This pertains to housing specific, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, like I was saying just a few minutes ago, establishes criteria findings that the community development director must make to make a decision to grant or deny the request for accommodations. And then, again, it would implement program 5.3A in the housing element, and like John was saying, that's very important for us to do for when the HCD reviews the programs and policies and goals that were part of the fourth cycle housing element. And the parking one is an example that John made, but another one would be for that wheelchair ramp, like I was saying before. Another could be a height requirement on fences so that someone can enjoy their yard that maybe has a little bit of an issue with being around the public and things like that.
Does that have anything to do with disability?
Yeah, it can, most definitely. Yeah. And then, and so we recommend that you adopt the resolution as part of the package here, and that would recommend to the city council to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, that height requirement, disability, what kind of disability is that? Somebody...
Well, it's not really a great example, and part of the issue is that you can't really tell someone to tell you exactly what disability they have. I don't know, maybe John can...
Well, I was going to say, I don't think really a fence height issue is something that we'd really be dealing with. And I can see us dealing more with setback issues, you know, like the example I gave, a garage, because it needed to accommodate a handicap vehicle. Or they need to put in a handicap ramp, and the handicap ramp is physically attached to the structure, and it becomes part of the structure, and it needs to encroach into a side setback standard. You know, something like that, clearly. The way this is structured... The way this is structured, correct. The way this is structured, it's a staff approval process as a ministerial act, and that can be appealed to the planning commission, just like any other action.
Right.
What's important to note, as part of the housing element, the housing element in and of itself is a tool that provides opportunity to do a number of things, but what it doesn't do is it doesn't provide funding. Funding comes through other sources. In this, you know, we're dealing with handicap individuals, it's going to be, you know, a bank, you know, or some kind of financial institution. There might be some state or federal funds available for it, and none that I'm aware of right now. But certainly, in dealing with housing elements, the only opportunity we have, you know, to deal with affordable housing, affordable housing-related projects is state and federal funds. And unless you have a certified housing element, you're not going to get any funds. That's why it's extremely important for us to stay certified. We have a certified housing element now. We fully intend to have a certified housing element at the end of this process.
Someone was building a single-family home on a lot that they purchased, and they wanted to get these particular type of variances on a setback because they have the particular type of handicap equipment that they, you know, need via ramp or driveway access or something like that. So this one here is what's going to speed up the process, right?
Theoretically, yes.
You brought up a good point. You can't ask what the disability is?
Yeah, it's against the, I have a section, it's, from what I understand, it's against a law to, because of federal and state fair housing laws... laws, the act prohibits the city to have the person specifically identify the disability that they have.
In the application, there wouldn't be any such comments from the applicant?
No, there really wouldn't, but it can kind of be ascertained by the variance or the improvement that they're wanting. So there's.
They're going to have to demonstrate need.
Yeah.
Bottom line. Regardless of whether or not we know exactly what handicap they have, they're going to have to demonstrate need.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Just like anything else.
Demonstrate need.
They have to demonstrate need. We don't necessarily need to know the specific handicap that they have.
Yep.
My next question is, if you don't have to, you know, by law disclose what it is, why do we need an ordinance change for it?
Well, other than the fact that it's required by not only our housing element and also by state law, I don't know. It's required by state law, and it's a program in our housing element. So what we've got is we've got a draft ordinance that we presented as part of this package, and starts on page 85.
I have another question on top of that.
That's fine, that's fine. And then, attached to that is the language that we're suggesting, and this is a public hearing, so we'll have to open up the public hearing on it, and that this item, obviously, is a recommendation that gets forwarded off to the city council.
Why am I going to bring that up? I know we have, I don't know, somebody wants to construct something, and this could be used as a tool to construct something that you're, you're saying is for something else, but it's actually for something else. Does this make sense?
But they're going to go through an application process and.
You don't have to disclose what the disability is.
Correct, but it has to fit correct or?
Has to fit correct to what?
Approved. I guess that's. Well, they're going to have to, they're going to have to, I mean, for example, if they're blind or something like that, they may not, you know, come out and tell us, hey, our handicap is, that we're blind and we need this. The reality is, you know, it's going to have to be demonstrated that they need, you know, whatever, for a ramp. I mean, it's pretty clear, we're going to do a ramp.
My handicap is.
The ramp doesn't meet, you know, if I put this ramp in, you know, the ramp is going to, you know, it's going to extend into the side yard setbacks.
Suppose it extends?
The example would be a site plan.
Suppose it extends to say you need to have a, in order for your rehabilitation?
Mm-hmm.
Maintain whatever
Mm-hmm.
physical needs that you have, you have to have this structure constructed in your, on your property. Now, that structure is going to impede somebody else's vision, it's going to face the area some kind of way. So are we saying that's, under this new ordinance, that's okay? Because you don't have to prove.
No, because again, again, you know, it's our obligation to make sure that that discretionary approval or ministerial act that we take, you know, doesn't distract from, in that case, the residential characteristics of the neighborhood. And if it does, then we've got an issue with it. Now, we can obviously appeal the decision that we make on it to you, or vice versa. A neighbor can appeal our decision to the commission. So, I mean, it is kind of an easy, it's an easier process because it's structured as a ministerial approval, like it's staff approval. But the reality is that it still has the ability, that act has the ability to come back to the commission on appeal. On appeal either by, you know, the project proponent or by an adjacent neighbor.
This applies to businesses or residents, or just?
It's resident housing.
It's just, it's just housing.
Just for housing.
Mm-hmm.
And I can imagine it's going to be used basically in retrofit, retrofit conditions, not necessarily new construction. Because in new construction, they can pretty much accommodate, you know, whatever handicap they might have. But it's, you know, as you know, as a real estate agent, I mean, there's going to be some site constraints that may not allow them to do everything they need to do on that site. So they're going to need those exceptions.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this? Close the public hearing, and I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion approving item 3.2, the zoning ordinance amendment establishing the reasonable accommodation ordinance, Resolution 2014-016.
Vice Chair Hughes, it'll actually be a motion to approve the resolution recommending the ordinance to the city council.
Okay, the resolution recommending the resolution to the city council.
I'm sorry, approving the resolution to recommend the ordinance to city council.
Approving the resolution to recommend the ordinance to the city council.
Yes.
There we go.
Do you have a second?
I have a second. Don't make me repeat that. Vice Chair Hughes.
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Commissioner McKenney.
Yes.
Chair Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vileboudois.
Yes.
Moving to item 3.3, zoning ordinance amendment, density bonus requirements.
Okay, Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, this is yet another item that is some cleanup legislation in our existing municipal code relative to density bonuses. It's specifically related to changes in state law. It is a program that's part of the fourth cycle of the housing element. And again, it's an obligation that we have with the city in order to clarify and restate changes that have occurred with state law as it relates to density bonuses. Dave, you ready? Dave Niskin and my associate will go through the staff report on this.
Yeah, thank.
Before you start, I went over all this, and I looked at all the charts. Can you tell me what a density bonus actually means? Because they use that term over and over again, and
Sure.
I don't know what they're talking about.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, yeah, density is the amount of dwelling units per acre, and a density bonus would be beyond what is allowed, per se. So, for instance, if someone, if a developer comes in and wants to develop affordable housing, well, the density bonus law allows for a density bonus, or allows for a density bonus beyond what normally would be required or normally allowed. Yeah. So just think of density bonus of dwelling units per acre, so, and then the bonus would be if someone's going to be providing affordable housing, then they would be able to get a bonus to what they normally would be allowed.
Place more homes
That's correct.
On that acreage.
Yeah. So the purpose is for, to provide the opportunity, incentive to provide affordable housing along with marquetry housing, kind of in the same development. And I'll go through my PowerPoint, and it'll make it a little bit more clear. Did that answer your question? Okay?
Yeah, I think so.
Are you saying, like, if it was, density is 20?
Right.
But then they want to, they see that they can put 24?
Mm-hmm.
For affordable.
Yeah, that's.
It's affordable. They hit that bonus, they met the criteria.
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah, they hit, they hit that percentage of affordable housing, then they get a percentage of density bonus.
So this is for the, for the developer? So if he agrees
That's correct.
to do, like, affordable housing, and he's going to say, okay, this is zoned, like, for 16?
Yeah.
Okay. But if he, if he agrees to do it at one of those levels, very low, low, et cetera, then he's allowed to increase the density?
Yep, yep.
And that's the basic principle, and then there's a covenant, there's actually a covenant that he would sign into that protects those units in an affordable manner in perpetuity or over some confirmed timeframe. You know, generally, it's 20 to 25 years.
Yeah.
Is it always a good thing for a city to have, like, very high density?
Well, it's certainly, it's certainly an option that we are under mandate to provide. And again, as an opportunity, it's not, we're physically building these affordable housing units, it's just we're providing the opportunity for affordable housing units. And we're providing the opportunity for a density bonus if they meet the criteria. And, you know, the state is trying to make sure that this is evenly applied over all jurisdictions statewide.
Yeah.
So.
We're not telling the developer to build affordable housing. Like John's saying, this provide the opportunity for them to propose affordable housing, then they would get an incentive to do that with a density bonus.
And what Dave's going to talk about is a state law that was passed, that's SB 1818, which even expands that whole definition, you know, to include senior housing, is an example.
That's correct.
So Dave will go through that.
Yeah. Yeah, and to be clear, the city already has a density bonus ordinance in the code right now. And what this action here in front of you, or the item in front of you, does is it amends that density bonus ordinance to be up to par with SB 1818 that I'll get into. The proposed ordinance adopts the state density bonus law by referencing Section 65915 of the California Government Code. So instead of having a very lengthy zoning code that makes elaborations on, you know, percentages and the amount of density bonus that a developer will get, that's already done by state law. If you look in that code, it's a full section of the density bonus, you know, affordable housing proposed, the density bonus they get. So it's already, it's already done. And like you read in the staff report, those charts reflect that. And also, it establishes criteria and procedures for the consideration of density bonus for lower income, and that means application procedures, findings that the staff has to make. And let me move on here. And just to give you a little background, the state density bonus law was first adopted in 1979, and it was a 25% flat density bonus for developments that met certain requirements, i.e. affordable housing. And that's the way the current density bonus ordinance is drafted. It's a little bit out of date. The Senate Bill 1818, adopted in 2004, added a sliding scale and higher maximum of attainable density bonus. So that sliding scale is the amount of dense, or amount of affordable housing proposed that will change the amount of density bonus that developer was going to be able to get. Excuse me. And then it also introduced the opportunity for developers to receive concessions or incentives, and there could be reductions in zoning standards and other development and design requirements. So it allows for the consideration of that as well. And the, like in the previous item, the 2009 and 2014 housing element was adopted in 2009, and in there, there's goals, policies, and programs, and Program 2.1D is particular to this item. It requires that the city adopt a density bonus ordinance in compliance with statutory amendments to state density bonus law. And there's the operative, the current code is not up to date with amendments to that state density bonus law. And the timeframe, again, is December 2010 for this ordinance to be adopted. Obviously, we're in 2014, it's not going to be fully adopted until 2015, so we're going to be catching up a little bit. And the proposed ordinance amendment will stay current with any amendments to the state density bonus because it's referencing that section, that code. So if they, if the state decides to change some sections or language, then that's already up to date in our code because we're referencing it in our zoning ordinance. And then it implements Program 2.1D, which, again, will be, will be in better light once HCD goes in and reviews the implementation of the goals and policies of the last cycle. And that ends my presentation. Thank you very much. And we can answer any questions, and I'll, additionally, I'll go through some of the density bonus options that are available. If you turn on the staff report, let's see which, staff report, page four. And it's components and then density bonus program.
That would be stat, stamp, page number 88?
88, okay. Actually, go to 87, there's a little bit better chart.
87?
Yeah, 87, please.
And then what section you want us to look at, Dave?
The top chart. It shows the.
Top chart.
Oh, are we on a, we have a.
Confused.
Oh, you're on the.
You're on the staff report?
Staff report, yeah.
Staff report, page 96.
Sorry, I have, I don't have the package, I just have the staff reports.
You want that top?
Yeah, that top chart, yeah, we can take a look at that.
Oh, yes.
So once everyone has it open, we can start discussing it.
So 96, sorry.
Yeah, 96. So on the top, there's restricted affordable units, so there's very low income, lower income and moderate. And then senior housing, like John was saying, is part of SB 1818, and then qualifying mobile home parks. Now, the developer is able to do, if they're going to do 5% very low income, their density bonus is 20%. And then 1% increase in the amount of affordable housing for very low income gets them 2.5 increase in density bonus that they're able to do. And then lower income is 10%, and the percentage of density bonus granted, again, is 20%. And it kind of goes down, once we get into a moderate income, it's only 5% granted. And these are all income levels. And then the chart just below it, the, that chart shows the amount of incentives or concessions a developer's able to receive. And very low income, if they offer 5% dense, or 5% affordable housing, 10% or 15%, that's one, two, or three concessions. So it could be a reduction in yard setback requirements, backyard setback requirements, maybe a little bit of a height incentive or variance there. And then the next page breaks it all down in one, in one chart. And I can answer any questions if you guys have any.
And in pass, it was just the standard 25%, you said?
Yeah.
So obviously, the state's made it a little more complicated.
Yeah, that's for sure.
But this puts us in compliance.
Yeah, definitely. And it implements the program, which is very important for the housing element.
Dave, what's a qualified mobile home park?
Uh.
That I was looking for. Is that a defined term?
I believe it is.
In the law?
I'm looking through the law right now. I'm sorry, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Hey, John, when a developer requests one of these waivers, who, who makes the decision whether or not that waiver would be granted? Would that be you?
I think the way it's structured, it's the community development director makes Which is the same way it is right now for the 25% density bonus. I don't see it, Dave.
I don't see it. I'm looking through the code right now, I'm sorry. No, that's okay.
Can you get back to us with that?
I can, most definitely.
It's the only one that's, that's standing out saying qualify, qualifying mobile. None of the other ones say qualifying, yeah. Like you have to meet.
Know what the qualification is?
Right.
Yeah.
We don't know what the qualification is on the.
The definition.
Yeah, I know, but that's individual setups I'm talking about, just overall density and the number of spaces they'd be allowed. So again.
Yeah. Yeah, I got you.
Chairperson Stewart asked, you know, who would have the ability to?
Chairperson Stewart asked, you know, who would, who would have the ability to review the application? If you look at, on page 106, where it talks about the application procedures, this is the applicant, application should be submitted on a form and contain such information, support data, as prescribed by the Community Development Director. And the applicant shall contain sufficient information to make the required determinations pursuant to the findings in California state law. And then, just like anything else, if the decision of the Community Development Director is appealed, it is appealed to the Planning Commission.
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that there, I mean, there would be a limit to the, all the different waivers that, that you would allow just to make something economically feasible. I mean, I'm assuming that common sense would enter.
Well, in this, in this case, it expands the definition of density bonus under certain terms and conditions with the intent to provide more housing for very low and low income housing categories. So that, so that's why the state did this. That's why, that's why they're trying to be a little more precise in how they deal with density bonuses, you know, statewide.
And. Accommodation.
It's an accommodation.
Affordable.
Absolutely.
And mobile home park, I just, I think I just found it in the government code. It's, that mobile home park that limits residency based on age requirements for housing for older persons.
Oh.
Senior?
Yeah.
So where's that, where's that, Dave?
Uh, that's under 65915, uh, under case B. That's halfway down the page. Uh, it's C, uh, letter C, uppercase C. I don't know if that's part of the definition for senior housing, senior citizen housing.
Senior housing development is defined.
Yeah, and then after that, or mobile home park.
Or mobile home, or they fall under the same criteria?
What page is that, John?
Mobile home park.
That'd be one of those things where you have to be like 55 to.
Yeah. Based on age requirements.
So that would be similar to senior citizen housing.
That would be, yeah.
So that's what they're saying. So if it's a senior park, then they qualify as if it's a normal senior housing project.
I understand. That's how I read it.
I understand.
You have your family parks and you have your senior parks.
Okay, do we have any more questions or comments?
None here.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. And I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Again, in this case, we're looking at Planning Commission taking action on a resolution that's presented on page 101 that references your recommendation that the City Council approve an ordinance that's described starting on page 105.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend to City Council Ordinance Number 20-14, the ordinance of the City Council of Riverbank, amending Title 153, zoning section 153.185, the density bonus requirements in the city's municipal code.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I'm Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Sarah Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal-Paudois?
Yes.
All the way down to upcoming meeting agenda items.
Yeah, um, Madam Chairperson and Commission, we've, we think we should, we should have the ordinance on tattoo establishments coming to you in December. We're working on that right now. It is likely we'll also have another housing element related ordinance presented to you on emergency shelters. We're working on that right now. We still have some additional work to do on it. And obviously, we have a tight timeline to meet our public hearing notice requirements. But we're hopeful that we'll have those two items for you at your December 18th meeting. I'm continuing to work on the downtown specific plan, but I've been pulled off of that and work on a number of other items, so haven't been able to focus on it. So anyway, so that's, that's what it looks like we're going to end up having for the December meeting. The City Council last week did take action to approve the advance funding agreement for the Bosio-Machado-Herringfield Specific Plan Annexation Proposal, which will consist of about 380 acres westerly of Oakdale Road. I don't know if it's going to be called Crossroads West or what it's physically going to be called, but we are going to be starting to work on that project fairly quickly. I've got a draft copy of the plan that I have reviewed. They've got comments. I've met with the applicant. We're starting to work on a land plan that meets the developer's goals as well, well as the city's objectives. So that'll, that's, that's definitely been kicked off.
Is it west of the crossroads?
It's west of Crossroads. So it's west of Oakdale Road. So it'd be approximately 380 acres. It's halfway between Coffey and Oakdale. Goes all the way north to the MID Main Canal, north of Morel, and all the way south to Clarabelle. So it would include the tulip, the tulip farm and the dairy.
I've been listening to some of the comments. I just wanted to make sure. It's definitely in our sphere of influence. And I just, I was wondering, does that encroach in that area? I think we ended up calling it an urban reserve. I'm not quite sure what the final terminology on that was.
Okay, well, it's not in our sphere of influence. It is in the general plan boundary. And the general plan boundary goes beyond Coffey Road. And the area beyond Coffey Road is kind of the area of urban reserve, if you will. So it's really the area between Coffey Road and McHenry that's known as kind of the urban reserve area. And what the mayor has talked about, and let me back up. In order for us, in order for the city to present a residential project to Stanislaus County Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, the body that takes action to expand our sphere of influence, the body that takes action to consider annexation of additional territory into the city of Riverbank. Their policies require us specifically to deal with agricultural land mitigation policies and mitigation. And in this case, the mayor would like to suggest, and that may change, as an option, potentially in, in a urban limit line, a permanent urban limit line at Coffey, Coffey Road. That will take a vote of the people, just like what the city of Newman has just gone through in establishing a permanent urban limit line, which comports to their general plan line. So anyway, so it's not in the sphere of influence. The sphere of influence will have to be expanded to include this 380-acre project, and that will be part of the review. The review will include a specific plan, a general plan change, rezone to support the specific plan, a development agreement, sphere of influence expansion, annexation, and municipal service review update. Because currently, our municipal service review, which LAFCO has taken action on, only pretty much includes the city boundaries, does not include any additional territory.
It's probably too early to ask this question, but how many new wells do you think would have to go in out there?
I don't know. I am, I have no idea. I know that we have an Ulti plan that, you know, you know, takes care of all that. I would suggest probably, you know, maybe one, one well, possibly two. But it may require, you know, storage, may require some type of water storage as well. So I don't, it is, it is early to, to determine exactly what it'll be necessary. Yeah, but it's a mixed-use project, so it's pretty much consistent with the GP, general plan designations that we have now. So you're going to have commercial, you know, you'll have about a 60-acre commercial piece. You'll have mixed-use residential. Hopefully, you'll get an expansion of the sport, regional sports complex to handle additional sporting opportunities as well as parking. I know that Sylvan Unit School District is very much interested in not only in elementary school, but also middle school. So we're looking at probably a 30-acre reservation in that regard for those two uses. And I've been told that the Stanislaus Consulted Fire District, district, may need a fire station out in that area. So there's going to be a number of things that will have to be dealt with, a number of land use strategies that'll have to be dealt with in that planning area.
I mean, you mentioned on Sylvan School District there. Would, I know that we're losing a lot of opportunity with our school system here with kids. They're, they're not, they live in town, but they choose to go elsewhere. Would that be something they would look at in the future, keeping it Riverbank Unified School District?
You're talking about, you're talking about school district boundary, and the school district boundaries are set. And the area that we're talking about is in Modesto City Schools and Sylvan School District.
There's some kids and families that go elsewhere now because.
They leave, they, they don't go to.
They put different addresses.
The schools that go to Byer? They don't go to Byer?
They live in Riverbank, but they're Modesto City Schools.
Well, they're either going to Enoch's or they're going to Gregori's. Both of those have open enrollment, so I mean, if they go, you know, they're part of that district. So you're talking about district boundary issue, really, more than anything.
And I remember when we were drawing the general plan, they almost, they almost split it again because that was one of the things we just said, we weren't, we were not going to break up that school district again because over on the other side of Patterson.
Oh, yeah.
Patterson, yeah.
That side, Sylvan.
That was one of the things that, that was a hard fought battle, keeping it all in that same school district.
One of the other work projects that we're engaged in is developing complete streets. What does that mean? Complete streets is streets that are to be utilized by vehicles as well as pedestrians as well as bicyclists. So we're trying to, you know, you know, improve our standards to accommodate some of the current urban thinking of, you know, complete streets for citywide development projects. David's been working on a couple different grant applications and dealing specifically with Claus Road and getting, you know, complete streets in Claus Road, including, you know, class-two bikeways that are properly marked and delineated and not used for parking. So we're working on that. We're, we're not giving up on Patterson Road. In fact, tomorrow, we have a meeting with representatives from Sierra Railroad. And they've got some issues with some encroachments, some railroad crossings along Townsend that they want to talk about. And we've got some improvement projects along Patterson that we'd like to talk about. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get something started, at least, you know, there at Patterson and Claus, that we might be able to convince BNSF to accept. If I can get one railroad to accept it, maybe I can get the other one to accept it or not. But at least I'll have an example that I can share. So that's kind of the thought, thought behind that process. You all got our Planning Department report for November. It's current, it's up to date. Some projects have fallen off. Other projects have been added to the list. We're continuing to work with county on the North County Corridor. North County Corridor is a, is a significant project that will affect Riverbank when and if it's ever built, long-term. And the city is very concerned about the eastern part of Riverbank and how that North County Corridor would affect traffic and circulation around the Riverbank Industrial Complex and potential jobs that would be generated by that project. So it's likely that staff can be given yet another project to work on, an industrial specific plan that would expand the Riverbank Industrial Complex further to the east, which would allow us to secure direct access to the North County Corridor at or around Eleanor. So there's a lot of moving parts with what I've just talked about, but it's certainly something that's in the forefront of, you know, the city's thinking, especially in light of all the effort going forward with the $200 million project associated with North County Corridor. The county is still insistent that there be a roundabout installed at Rozelle and Clarabelle. City staff is not confident of that because of the amount of truck, traffic that we currently experience on Clarabelle. So we're continuing to work with county staff, hopefully with the opportunities of doing more of a signalized intersection there, but we'll see how that goes.
That being you, a roundabout?
Yeah, not the way it's designed right now.
Really?
No, no, no. Our experts are telling us if they want to do a roundabout, they'd have to be about twice the size that the county wants to build. So just a, just a, just a, just a taste of some of the things that we got going on. Yeah.
We worked on something last month to approve something for this grant, for a grant for the bike lanes and some kind of a grant that was, we had to have some type of ordinance or document approved by the Planning Commission.
Talking about the Valley Air Grant that you just spoke about?
Yeah.
That you spoke about it last month as well?
We just did a workshop on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just did a workshop on it.
We approved something there because you had a deadline or we didn't have it and it was, had to be.
Uh, there's no deadline on it. There, as far as what the Valley Board says, there's a plenty of funding and there's no deadline for the applications to go in. It's just when fundings are exhausted, that's when the application period ends. I'm not sure if that's what you were talking about or not.
Because we wanted to have that in place before the city put up money to have it done.
Well, well, Patterson Road is one that we've spent a lot of time on because the city is getting ready to spend money on design and improvement of Patterson Road between Rozelle and First. And we wanted to set in place kind of a long-term concept plan in how we might be able to accomplish a complete street for Patterson Road between Rozelle and Claus. And the, and the frustration that we've had is in dealing with the railroads and in dealing with some of the right-of-way constraints that we have with existing physical improvements along that, along that segment. That might be what you're thinking of. And along, and by the way, along Patterson Road is where we would like to do a class-one bike path, which we'd like to be able to tie into the funding that's provided by the Air District.
Nothing to deal with just something like our road infrastructure? It has something to do with, we wanted to make sure we had that in place because it was a, it was going to be, it's a grant that's available.
Well, we're using CMAC funds for that project that I just referenced.
This was something to, to, I guess, because you were still waiting on.
Well, true.
The, you know, the, the size of the road is not big enough to accommodate the bike lanes on both sides.
Correct. And then, and with Patterson Road specifically, we're going to have to sit down and have a neighborhood meeting with, with some of those folks where we have restricted right-of-way. Because quite frankly, one of the suggestions is that we eliminate parking in front of their houses, which isn't going to be very popular. So I've been told by more than one individual that, you know, we need to look at all other alternatives, but the problem is I don't have enough right-of-way. And, and the railroad's not willing to play, so without the extra right-of-way, I don't really have a choice. Because I've got to get lanes of travel, you know, to accommodate trucks. Because that's a truck route. Patterson Road is a truck route. Anyway, that's all, that's all we have at the Planning Department. Other. Other than, other than the fact, we want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, happy and safe Thanksgiving if you're traveling. Yes.
Already.
Yes.
Yep.
Next week.
Believe it or not.
Yeah. It's upon us.
Cowboys play that day, so keep an eye out for it.
Oh, the Cowboys.
Always.
Cowboys.
Always.
Cowboy fan, huh? Wow. My brother is in Texas, so I guess he's a, he's a.
We're journeying.
Oh, we're journeying.
We're journeying? Okay, good. Thank you.